Good evening, it is now six thirty and I will call the December eleventh Planning Commission Meeting to order. Commissioners, thank you for joining us, staff, thank you for coming in. Our first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff or the commission on tonight's agenda? No changes? I would say for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Our second item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from the November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen Planning Commission Meeting. Are there any changes from staff or the commission on those minutes? No changes? I would say for a motion.
No moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Our third item on the agenda this evening is a continuance of the public hearing to consider approval of the two thousand forty Comprehensive Plan Draft to submit to adjacent jurisdictions for mandatory six-month review period, and I believe presenting tonight is Ms. Paul.
Mr. Chair, we have Mark Kogler from Hoysington Kogler, who's going to give the presentation tonight.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. After many, many hours, many, many months, all the time that you spend in this room, I'm pleased to be back to say that we have the draft of the Comprehensive Plan pulled together. This group saw this on the thirteenth of November, and you recall at that time you opened a public hearing and took some testimony on properties, changes in the comp plan, or at least information relative to that. The presentation at that time was kind of focused more on what is a comprehensive plan, kind of the general background, talked a bit about the focus areas, and then looked at some of the community engagement activities that had occurred. Tonight, we're going to give you a little run-through of each of the chapters. I know you've been then through them in some detail, but for those who are viewing, we will cover kind of what's in the plan for background purposes. And then we'll talk a little bit more with questions that you might have, and then I believe procedurally, you'll reopen the hearing, take testimony, and then close the hearing appropriately, and then a recommendation would be brought forward or suggest to be brought forward to the City Council. We're going to tag-team tonight, we being me and Mr. Albrecht on the other side of the room, and just run through kind of each of the chapters and give you a bit of an overview. The first of those is Chapter One, which is kind of the community overview or context section. One thing that you'll hear from me now and you'll hear from me as we go on this evening, ends and outcomes, it's two terms that you hear repeatedly and you see sprinkled throughout the comprehensive plan. The City Council for Burnsville has a pretty unique approach in that it establishes kind of strategies and directives on an annual basis through a series of ends and outcome statements, and those prove to be very valuable, as I'm sure they did ten years ago, but this time around in updating the comprehensive plan. So the plan has been consistently framed relative to those statements and the directions that those impart. So the kind of the introduction and the orientation to that is within the first chapter of the plan. Then this section covers demographics, growth of the community, residential and business survey information that was done in two thousand sixteen. There were two surveys that were actually completed, one was a resident and one was a business survey, and both of those provided insights and information that were used throughout the plan, but particularly, I think, in the economic competitiveness chapter, that was part of the document itself also. The other thing that's here is that sustainability and kind of the framework for sustainability is defined in this section of the plan. Another first, I think pretty much first in the metro area was the City of Burnsville Sustainable Plan that was done about ten years ago. This comprehensive plan picks up on elements of that and carries that forward, and that's described as to how that occurs in the first chapter of the document. Chapter Two, the land use chapter, is one of the really more common chapters that customarily is viewed in a comprehensive plan, because one of the things people frequently look at is what's the land use map look like, what's a future parcel designated. Accordingly, there's information in that chapter on existing land use, vacant land use, future land use, there is a future land use plan. Burnsville, I forget the number, it's about ninety-eight percent, I think, developed. You might say to yourself, well, where will growth occur? It will occur. The growth projections that are identified in the plan identify an increase of about eighty-three hundred people between now and two thousand forty, about twenty-three hundred new households, about ten thousand jobs, and the household size will stay relatively constant, just under two and a half people per unit. So there will be growth taking place. Where will that occur? Redevelopment will be certainly a principal way in which that will happen. We'll talk a little bit tonight about heart of the city, certainly heart of the city is kind of the poster child, if you will, in Burnsville for where redevelopment has occurred, where you've seen higher density housing come in, which obviously leads to the kind of growth in resident count that we're talking about here. Community design is featured in the land use chapter also. There are sections on corridors, there are sections on public gathering spaces, not really design guidelines per se, but almost more of a design policy kind of statement. And then importantly, in the land use chapter, the four principal kind of future growth areas in the city are covered, that being heart of the city. Burnsville Center emerged as quite a discussion topic during this particular comprehensive plan, not only because of the changing nature of retail, but because of the upcoming BRT and the ability to have some transit-oriented development, maybe in conjunction with Burnsville Center. The MRQ, the Minnesota River Quadrant, still lies on the horizon as a great opportunity for future growth in this city, and it will happen, it's just a matter of timing. And then the East Cliff Road Business Park was another one of the sites that was looked at specifically within the land use plan. You'll see, as we talk through this this evening, kind of the last bullet typically is sustainability and implementation. That is an element of each chapter. Rather than pen a sustainability or resilience chapter in the document itself, what it does, each chapter by chapter, will contain some initiatives and strategies relative to those two topics. The third chapter I'm going to talk briefly about is economic development. One of the things that's being emphasized by the Metropolitan Council for communities this time around is economic competitiveness. The Burnsville Economic Development Chapter in the last plan had many of the elements that are being called upon today. Those have been updated certainly, and it's been expanded. This particular chapter looks at kind of the market and the demographics and the growth of jobs and wages in the community. It does focus on economic competitiveness, specifically looking at employment centers. There are several within this community, South Cross is a big one, the Fairview area, County Road Forty-two being another of those. The city does have some very strong economic assets, transportation is a big one, and accessibility to transportation, given the location of the community. The city has a strong and, I think, very effective partnership with the local business community that has proven valuable and can continue to do so. And then there are other assets that are described in the comprehensive plan that relate back to this place's attraction for business also, good parks, affordable housing being a couple of those key items. There are tools and resources that are identified within this particular plan to talk about economic growth. Also identified are a couple of opportunities and challenges. I touched on those a second ago, transit-oriented development is certainly on the opportunity side of that equation. The challenging side is Burnsville Center and the changing face of retail and what that means in terms of future land use and future uses in that area. The focus areas that I touched upon before are also addressed in economic development, and as I stated with land use, it ends with sustainability and implementation being discussed as well. In most comprehensive plans, you would find, Chapter Four would say housing. In Burnsville, it's labeled as neighborhoods and housing. It really takes a little bit different lens on housing and certainly looks at the broader picture of housing in the community, but also gets down a little bit more to the neighborhood level. You'll see information in there on the housing stock within the community, probably no great surprise, most of the housing is over about thirty years old. I think, if I remember numbers right, only about a half of one percent of the housing within the community was built within the last five years or so, not a high number. There are units added each year, but those numbers are relatively minor. The owner rental ratio right now is about sixty-four percent owner occupied, thirty-six percent rental. That will stay presumably relatively constant, however, as the continuation of redevelopment happens and multifamily housing comes in, you may see that tip a little bit one direction or the other. This community has affordable housing, about seventy-five percent of the units are at or below what's called the eighty percent AMI, which is simply a reference point of income. Most of Burnsville's housing is relatively affordable, and the house, the community has been the site of obviously growth in senior housing in the last decade as well. I think today, there are about fifteen hundred units of senior housing in the community. Future forecasts and needs are addressed in the housing section. Burnsville, like every other community in the metro area, has been given an allocation of affordable housing units by the Metropolitan Council to accommodate within the plan. In the case of Burnsville, it totals two hundred and sixty-six units. I can tell you from experience, it's higher than other communities. A portion of that is simply due to the fact that this community has what's commonly referred to as naturally occurring affordable housing. That simply means an older housing stock that is relatively affordable in many cases. The land use plan and the housing plan, however, both certainly do focus on meeting the two hundred and sixty-six unit growth that's tabbed between now and two thousand thirty. Future housing needs, housing stock, areas to grow, diversification of population are some of the things that are addressed in the housing plan as well. This community has seen a change in the diversity, will continue to do so, and that's discussed as a part of that. Again, my last bullet point, sustainability and implementation is addressed for the housing initiatives that are within the plan as well. With this, I get to throw it to the other side of the room for a minute.
Thanks, Mark. I'll take on the Chapter Five, Natural Environment Chapter. This is a pretty large encompassing chapter of things in Burnsville specifically. Number one, it highlights the natural environment and the assets, which are fairly substantial in the city of Burnsville. Protection and planning, so we have a natural resource management plan, now that plan dates back to two thousand seven. The plan has been updated in pieces, I would say, over the last several years. We have our Emerald Ashbore Plan, which has taken our forestry management kind of to the next level. It's been the main focus. I would expect in the next couple of years that that plan will also be updated. We just recently completed an update of the Water Resource Management Plan, which informs this chapter. Many of the strategies in that plan are incorporated into this chapter, and that included a wetland protection and management plan update. There weren't significant changes to that back in two thousand eight, and then in two thousand fifteen, there were administrative changes made to that chapter to bring it into compliance with state law. We will be, in the implementation chapter, you'll see some reference to considering some stronger buffer standards around some specific types of waters. The other part of that is, as we work with our watershed districts, we will have to find some balance with some of the things that they're proposing, and so that's something that you'll probably see coming forward in the near future. So that, those are kind of encompassing of the plans, and then the future of our natural environment and sustainability plan. I think I want to hit on a couple of big topics that are in here and mention a couple of things. One thing we are going to ratchet up in the implementation section is freeway landfill and freeway dump are a top priority of the city. In looking at the draft, while we have it laced throughout the chapter, we really do want that to come through in the implementation section, maybe a little bit stronger than it does right now. That would be one item. Our urban forest management plan, which right now is focused on EAB, but is really evolving, our urban forest in Burnsville is one of the things and assets that makes Burnsville unique compared to many of our cities, the bluff area, our mature neighborhoods, the mature trees. Well, EAB is our current issue. Forestry diseases and invasives come every couple of years, we have a new one, and so the council has spent quite a bit of effort and resources to establish a very solid funding plan for combating and working through those issues like we're working through EAB right now. And so I think that is going to be an ongoing battle for the city to maintain our urban forest. That will be one of our high priority implementations things. A second one is something that was before this body, about a year and a half ago, we did our drinking water protection overlay district. That district is in full swing now, we completed all of our inspections in the last year, and you will see annual reports on that district moving forward, that's not going away. As long as we have landfills and the uses that we have in our drinking water supply area, we will always have to be diligent on enforcing and monitoring that area, so that's going to be a big theme in implementation. And then, and in general, implementation of what we found in our Water Resource Management Plan, and the big topics, the last plan, the big focus was on flooding and damage to property through water. The city has expended millions of dollars in the last ten years finding those issues, solving those issues. Now, I think, we really believe it's turning to water quality is our next big issue. Many of our smaller lakes suffer seasonal algae blooms and different invasive species issues that are really the high priority. In our, in our surveys during the Water Resource Management Plan, that was the number one thing we heard, and it wasn't even close, water quality of our kind of natural, smaller lakes and areas. And so the city is going to be focusing on that. We do have some good news in that Crystal Lake will be delisted as an impaired water in two thousand eighteen. That's a great step for the city, that's the second water that has been delisted from being impaired in the last eight years. Early Lake was two thousand ten. And so that shows that the efforts the city's making are bringing things back to where they need to be, but now we need to focus on the smaller lakes, the Sunset Ponds and some of our lakes that receive a lot of roadway-type urban runoff, and so you'll see that as a big part of our implementation plan moving forward. And so those are the implementation elements. Again, sustainability is woven throughout this, and sustainability is focusing on protection of that environment. One of the things I want to touch on is the county is in the process of updating their solid waste management plan. That plan is going to inform a great deal of what we do in Burnsville, because we are the leaders of Dakota Valley Recycling for the four large cities. We're going to be the leaders moving forward. One of the big things you're going to see is the county's got goals to have curbside organic pickup by two thousand twenty-five. That's going to be a big, popular topic. Weekly recycling pickup versus every two weeks is going to be a big issue, as they're trying to cut back on the waste that's going to the landfills, and what you find is, most people fill the recycling up in one week, and then the balance of it goes to the landfill because they don't have room, and that's just a reality. And so that's going to be something the county's going to be working with the cities and DVR on, and so that will be some of the big sustainability measures that we see coming forward in the near future. So those are, that's kind of an overall summary of the natural environment chapter.
Mark? Thanks, Steve. Chapter Six is titled Community Enrichment. This is a chapter that I would tell you is largely unique to the city of Burnsville. It's interesting, because the comprehensive plan frequently is viewed as being a physical document. We deal with land use, we deal with housing, we deal with transportation, we deal with sewers, but this really kind of brings it more into kind of the human and social side of the community, which is, I think, unique and quite interesting. It contains information that really begins to talk about the different resident groups, whether it be youth or seniors. It talks about their integration into the community in terms of programs that occur, some of those are city-led, things like park programs, recreation program, and community events. One of the things that certainly is discussed in this particular chapter is relationships with the school district. We have school district representation, as you know, on the group that reviewed the comprehensive plan on an ongoing basis, and so there's discussion, not only of the Burnsville district, but all three of the districts that lie within the community's boundaries. The section also really kind of addresses partners in the community. The implementation initiatives that are cited in this chapter, as well as others, are not solely the domain of the city of Burnsville. In many cases, there are a variety of other agencies that are involved in implementation, but in many cases also, there are nonprofits, for example, who can assist the city and work with the community to reach some of the goals that are identified in the plan. So those kind of connections are called out in terms of the partnerships that are there. Also, even getting down to the level of volunteer opportunities. We had, within, again, the review group, representations from a variety of the Burnsville communities, one of those being the senior community, and this topic came up a number of times in conversation about how important that was and making sure that people are aware of what those were throughout the community. Sustainability and implementation, again, interwoven throughout here, there specifically are comments about implementation, and it really falls along the lines of some of the coordination and some of the collaboration that I referred to a minute ago. So, again, a unique chapter as far as comprehensive plans go, if you're a student of the Metropolitan Council, you won't be able to look in the, in the local planning handbook and see exactly what you're supposed to do for community enrichment, because it's not there. However, this serves the community very well, and I think it touches on another side of the comprehensive plan, which is important to the overall community. Back to you, Mr. Albert.
Thank you. Transportation Chapter. This chapter goes quite in-depth at summarizing our existing road, trail, and transit system. You'll notice that our park system in Burnsville kind of gets split into two chapters, essentially, kind of our, well, three chapters, really. We've got the section of the parks that's related to the natural environment chapter. Now, this chapter really speaks to our trail system, especially the regional trail system, and then you'll also, we'll talk about it a little bit in the facilities chapter, too. And then transit is a big part of this. The one thing that this chapter also does is it takes a look at our current conditions, looks at congestion issues, capacity issues. You'll note that we highlighted a couple of the serious ones that are in the chapter. Level F service, that's the worst level of service that we can have at an intersection, and what that relates to is delay in efficiency of getting vehicles through a roadway corridor, and so A is the best, F is the worst. And so, in this case, and there's great, good detail, if you really want to get into it in the chapter, on how, what the different delays are that make up those criteria, but just to give us a flavor, right currently in Burnsville, I thirty-five south of Crystal Lake Road, Seth, during times of the day, is an F-level service. That's much a result of the split area and the merging and crossing that goes on at the split that causes that backup. And then Trunk Highway thirteen west of County Road Five, and some may say, well, we just did County Road Five, and didn't they just do some work in Savage? Well, there's a piece in between the work that's been done in Savage and the work we've done that is still in poor shape. It looks like Savage is going to land a substantial freight grant from the state to do a big part of the ports of Savage. That'll still leave a piece of Savage, and then to the Washburn intersection in Burnsville that needs to be addressed, and that's on the state's radar, so that's good news, but it is a very low service area. And then also, this plan pulls, one of the things about the comp plan is it becomes kind of the clearinghouse or touch point for many of the sub-plans that we do, and we wanted to make sure that this version did a good job of highlighting any plans that we, and studies that we've done, and grabbing the prominent information. So this plan, there's several studies related to both transit, roadway network, and pedestrian studies related to County Road Forty-two. We've got the Trunk Highway thirteen corridor study that's part of this plan, the MRQ, we've got several studies there, and then we've got the Cliff Road West, and we refer to Cliff Road West, that is the area of Cliff Road West of thirty-five, where if you're ever leaving the Kramer Quarry area at the wrong time of day, you're going to sit there for a while, and so that area is another part of the city's plan. And then the plan looks at future needs. Now, those future needs, transit-wise, the orange line, much of our transit focus, at least at this time, is on what the orange line can do, but we also incorporate the east-west transit study, because even though we have two transit providers, they have to work seamlessly. Our residents and businesses, they don't differentiate between MVTA and Metro Transit, to them, it's transit, and so the job of the city, I see our role as making sure that the two blend together nicely and that we do a good job of planning those connections, and so that's a big part of it. The transportation area zone analysis, that provides us the demographics for future anticipated traffic generation, and so the TASs, as they're called, those are used to calculate future volumes on roadways, and that's where much of the future modeling comes from, and so there's a section dedicated to that. And that's how we determine, based on those areas, what we expect for demographics, jobs, population, where do we think we're going to have pressure points in the future, based on our current, the current growth, not so much in Burnsville, but around us and what we're seeing happening. And so that highlights some future capacity issues. Now, these are assuming no projects occur. I think that's important for everybody to understand, if we weren't to do anything, these would be the areas that would be becoming an issue. In addition to the ones I discussed earlier, you'd be looking at Trunk Highway thirteen, both east and west of thirty-five W, so immediately east and west of it, and even, and that includes the area that we've just redone on thirteen west, and what that means is if we don't fix the problem between Savage and Burnsville, that'll eventually back us up all the way to thirty-five if we don't address that issue and get that corridor on that side. And then when we're talking on the east side of thirty-five, it's essentially Nicollet Intersection that's, that's a big issue for the city long-term. There are plans there to do some things with turn lanes and how we get transit in and out of that area. You know, you've got MVTA in the northeast corner, and now we have Metro Transit coming to the southwest corner, and so that intersection's only going to continue to get more use, and so left in its current state, we will see a level of F-service at that intersection in the future. And then I thirty-five north of Crystal Lake Road, and so now you've got kind of a continuation of that piece we were talking about, an extension of the, of the backups, and that's the area that essentially at the Y becomes free and flows, it won't become free and flow in the future, because it'll be backed up from the north end in that location. And then we've got County Road Forty-two west of thirty-five E, that area will continue to grow in congestion. One of the big projects that is identified is, the county is looking at forty-two and the potential six-lane expansion into Apple Valley with County Road Forty-two from thirty-five. That's going to be a significant project somewhere out in the future, and most likely will have legs before the next comp plan is done, and so that's another item to note. And then non-motorized trails, or routes. Trails have become the number-one topic when we talk about recreation facilities in the city, ways to get around, trails are the top of the list. The public wants more trails, they want them maintained quicker. I get more calls about snow on trails than I do on the roads these days, and it's because people want to get out and enjoy the day, no matter what the weather is. And so we've got significant trail projects planned, both with the county and as part of the regional trail network. We've got the Lake Marion system that'll be going in in two years. We've got the Cliff Road Trail Extension down to thirteen, which will complete that Cliff Road section, and then the city will be looking at future trail projects and crossings also. We've identified that the Nicollet Corridor may be a major north-south corridor connecting County Road Forty-two all the way up to Cliff Road at some point, and so to do that, though, we have to figure out how do we get across thirteen at certain times of the day, and so those are the types of trail topics and trail issues that you'll see moving forward. And so from implementation, I think I've touched on, a lot of what we will be doing, at least at the city's level, we'll be working with the county. Transportation funding is not something that's abundant, but the county has several of the projects that I mentioned, the Highway thirteen corridor projects and the forty-two projects. Dakota County has identified those in their sales tax plan. So the plan that they're looking at for their implementation of sales tax for regional transportation projects does include those projects, and unfortunately, the county is essentially forced to take the lead, because the state doesn't have funding to deal with the thirteen corridor and the thirteen projects, and so for Burnsville, that is a good thing. The county has spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of months working with the cities to develop a strategy with the sales tax for the county board to consider, and so Burnsville does benefit with our traffic volumes to see some of that money long-term potentially coming to help solve some of our issues, and so that'll be a big key part of the implementation plan. Another key part will be the regional solicitation. The city of Burnsville has been fairly successful in getting REITs federal dollars. Both of the trail projects, the Cliff and the Lake Marion Trail Projects, are being eighty percent funded by the federal government, and so that's important, because the twenty percent is still a significant amount of money, oftentimes near a million dollars, and so to do those projects, we do need those partners. And so that, along with sustainability, our emphasis on transit and alternate modes of traffic, that's kind of this chapter in a nutshell, I guess. It's an ever-evolving traffic chapter. It does also acknowledge that autonomous vehicles and changes in how we travel are coming. We're a little early at this time to make concrete decisions on how we're going to deal with those, but it is definitely a monitoring thing that we're, you're going to see in our chapter, and we know that it's coming. We don't think that until late two thousand twenty's is when it's going to be something that's fully implemented, and we also don't know what other technologies may come and go. And there's a lot of talk about what autonomous vehicles will actually mean, mean to traffic volumes, because they could potentially open up an entire new sector of travel for, for people who haven't been able to travel because they can't drive, all of a sudden would have access to autonomous vehicles. So it's not such a sure thing that it's going to reduce traffic volumes at certain times of the day necessarily, and, and then what do we do with parking of those vehicles? How do they operate with our older traffic signals and things of that nature? So there's a lot of topics related to automation that we will have So, there's a lot of topics related to automation that we will have to be monitoring over the next 10 years. Mark, back to you.
Actually, do you want to tag team this one?
Sorry, back to me. Thought I got a broth, but not.
Your name's Steve, not Mike. You're on such a roll, Steve.
This is like the all-encompassing chapter of the comp plan right here. So, it, it's kind of funny. We, we zip through the organizational structure, administration, all the other departments as part of this chapter. As a public works guy, I don't worry about the police and the fire as much. But this does get very much into, to city operations and facilities and services. And so, number one, touching on our organizational structure, touching on the divisions and different departments and how the city's structured, basically. And that evolves to the facilities and the services that the city provides. And so, from a facility standpoint, you're going to see a lot of emphasis on our buildings and facilities. I think everybody's aware with what's going on outside of City Hall right now. Over the next 10 years, our next big challenge will be our fire department and getting our fire facilities up to where they need to be. And so, that'll be something that'll evolve in more detail over the next five years. And, but by the next comp plan, we hope to have a new fire station for Fire Station One. The final location is still to be determined, but somewhere in the area that it is now. So, that's going to be the big overriding piece of facilities once we get this project completed at City Hall, in addition to just kind of general maintenance of the existing facilities. Obviously, we're, the other part is we're in a transition time with our park system. Our park system was largely built in the 1980s. And so, you're seeing with our signs and everything in the parks, we're basically in a process of renovating most of our major parks. Lack Lebon was recently completed. We've got a little bit of lighting left to do, but a major overhaul of the Lack Lebon facility. We'll be doing things at Ala Magnet over the next two years. And so, you're going to see that renovation, not necessarily new parks, but I'd call them updated parks. Our parks will be renovated. We will be looking at what are the needs in those parks? What's changed? Are we still going to provide the same amenities or are there different amenities? And so, the park system master plan, which was recently completed, that will inform kind of the direction of where the park system is headed and evolves over the next several years. And then, obviously, public safety, we talked about those facilities as part of the discussion. Moving to city services, this plan includes a telecommunications plan. We're cer, we're currently in the process of working at a county basis on fiber optic and how the county is going to be linked and how we're going to utilize and combine county and city resources across the county to make the county a better place, both to live and to have a business and to communicate. And so, that is a part of this plan, and there's significant things and efforts going on in that area. From a sanitary sewer standpoint, the city of Burnsville is fairly fortunate in that our system is in very good shape. We continue what's called our inflow, an infiltration-elimination program. We refer to that as I-N-I, where we're lining our pipes. But Burnsville has got that issue under control you hear about in other cities. We're fortunate that we're a, I'd call us an elevated community in that we don't have a lot of sewers that are submerged in lake areas or underwater tables. That certainly helps us. But, so that'll be the big thing that will continue. It's not really something that needs to change. It just needs to be something that the city continues. Water is probably what I would call our biggest area in, in this, in this chapter. And our potable water system, we touched on it a little bit, and the protection of the source in the natural environment section. But our potable water system, we are in good shape as long as we maintain and protect that system. And we've got a couple of pretty substantial implementation goals in this chapter. We do have a goal of reduction of overall use by 10% in the community. It's a little tougher for a developed community to reduce use because we're not putting in as many new buildings and new facilities that have lower-use-type toilets and fixtures and things of that nature. So, ours tend to come as areas are redeveloped and things of that nature. But we do believe through education, irrigation is certainly an area that the city can be working with our residents and businesses on reductions. And then also, our water meter program, our water meter installation, which will be completed early next year with almost 17,000 new water meters. That's going to help probably get our, what we call un-metered or unbilled water under 10%. And that's significant to the city because that's uncaptured revenue that's going to businesses and homes. And so, in the number of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year of revenue, and what happens is because you're not recovering that revenue, you end up raising rates to offset that revenue. You also raise rates to pay because that water goes down the toilet and has to be treated, but because you're not tracking it, you're also paying for it to be treated and you're not holding those accountable that are using it. So, the meter system will get everybody back up accountability-wise throughout the city. It'll also give us a much better control of our water system and an ability to work with our residents and businesses on conservation. So, that's going to be a substantial effort that goes on here. And then working with the Kramer Quarry on our intakes and protection of those intakes, obviously. And so, from a sustainability and implementation plan standpoint, I talked about kind of what are big efforts. There'll be, you'll see them on the facilities side. You're going to see public safety still continue to be our, our big push in the next 10 years. You're going to see the park system, like significant efforts there. And then you're going to see this coalition of the cities and counties on the implementation of our telecommunications plan. And then the potable water system, that's going to be, continue to be a top priority of the city of Burnsville. It's really linked to everything we do. The freeway landfill, at the, at the end of the day, the reason we're so concerned about freeway landfills is the potential to contaminate groundwater. That's, that's a significant issue to us in Burnsville. And if you look long-term at the Met Council's projections, when the quarry stops pumping, we will have an abundance of groundwater in Burnsville. We'll be one of the few cities that does have an abundance because they're currently essentially pumping as much water as the city of Burnsville into the Minnesota River on a daily basis. So, when they stop pumping, that's a good thing as long as we have taken care of all the potential contaminant sources in that area, which is why freeway landfill and dump will be a top priority for us, so. Mark?
Thank you. So, in your packet, there was a recommendation that's been offered by staff. And what that will do is that will move the draft comprehensive plan forward to the plan, from the planning commission to the city council. That date is scheduled for next week, December 19th at 5:30. The purpose of the council meeting would be to conduct a similar review to what you're doing this evening and then presumably to pass the comprehensive plan along, if you will, to the review period. Under the state law, there is a six-month, up to a six-month, I should say, review period that the Burnsville plan has to undertake along with every other comprehensive plan. And all that simply means is that when Burnsville gets its plan done, it shares it with its neighbors. Neighbors being the county, the school districts, the adjacent jurisdictions, regional agencies, folks of that nature. After those comments are received back, and again, that, that can take as long as six months, then the city will take a look at those, decide if there's any modifications that want to be made, and then submit the plan in July of next year, again, pretty much at the latest, to the Metropolitan Council for review. The Metropolitan Council then will conduct a formal review, will come back to the city and identify if there's anything that needs to be modified or changed. We certainly don't anticipate there will be much of that. There could be some minor things. At that point in time, then, when the Metropolitan Council review and approval takes place, the plan comes back to the city of Burnsville and is available for adoption. So, that can occur at the end of 2018 in, in a kind of a general sense. You know, and again, I would say that the six-month review period is up to six months. Burnsville's on the, kind of the earlier side, truthfully, of the comprehensive plan submittals. So, unless every other city and every other jurisdiction is just working on their own plan and has no time for anything else, perhaps that will be advanced a little earlier than the six months. So, again, the city will be in a position then to adopt the plan in full after all of that review takes place, and then it will be in place, ready to help guide growth for the next 10 years. With that, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think that covers what Steve and I wanted to do in terms of summary. We certainly would stand for any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Mark. And before we jump into questions, I'm just going to do the public hearing quick. And since this is a continuance, I will reopen the public hearing. If anybody would like to come and speak to this item, you're welcome to come up. And if there is nobody, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, if there's any discussion or questions or modifications, this evening now is a good time to discuss before this goes to the city council. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, I must say, this is a document that has received the attention of a lot of people, a lot of people working it to make it to what we have today. And I must congratulate you and Jenny and your entire team in putting this together. It's, it's not going to be perfect because things are going to happen in the next 20 years that we didn't think about. And however, I think we, we have a good grasp of what we would like to do. I, I think the, the bottom of each chapter, you have the sustainability and implementation. That's, that's very, very important in my, my mind is very important because that's what it's all about. We can plan and we can do, but if we can't sustain it, no use doing it. And I commend you also for doing that. Chapter four, chapter four is always about housing when you do the city and county thing. And I, I personally would have liked to see the chapter says, "Housing and Neighborhoods." Because when you come down, your first paragraph after the heading goes with housing. And I would have preferred to see, if it can be changed, it's up for your consideration. In your, when you were up there and you, the next step thing, I saw you said, "Final Adoption," your notes had "December 2019." And you, in your presentation, you said "December 2018," which is correct. Eighteen, okay, thank you.
That's my mistake, so I do apologize for that.
You can make one mistake a year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. It's the end of the year, right?
Save it till the end.
I think that's, that's all I can, my comments for now, Mr. Chair. Good, great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner, any other questions or? Mr. Minkie.
Okay.
You conceded the floor to you.
Sorry, okay. Steve, I just had two clarifications, I think. Under natural environment, you talk about stormwater management, development standards modified modestly. Not everybody might realize this, but in the development industry, it's been pretty common knowledge that the MPCA requirements are actually considerably more stringent. So, I'm just wondering how that kind of stuff compares to how this is written and where the differences are for the people that are listening.
Really, the big change that we'll have in our plan is the, for example, the, we've gone from developers treating a one-inch rainfall to the 1.1-inch rainfall. So, we've gone to the Mids design. We've actually tried to standardize Burnsville to be a little bit more standard with the majority of the communities. So, that's what our efforts are here, is to make us, make it so that when developers come to Burnsville, we're not at a different standard level than we're seeing in the communities around us.
Sure. I guess it comes up because I know that some of my developments that have been going in, we've been seeing our retention basins grow by 30 to 50% under this new standard. And does that mean that the Burnsville standard was higher in the, in the past and we've just moved to one that's more comparable with everybody else's as well?
I don't know that it means that it's been higher in the past. It would, the 1.1 would actually make us comparable, so we'd actually be increasing our standard a little bit in that area. I would say that it'll still remain our goal with the funding the city council has, is anytime there are opportunities for us to address stormwater management at a more regional level, we think that benefits the community. And so, I think, I'll use the MRQ as a good example. We've been able to do some projects there so that as they develop and redevelop, we don't have to go and do small ponds. I think we would have the same strategy with multifamily development and other developments, too, in the, in the future here, so.
Sure, okay. And then for number four, obviously, you said it was very big on, on the neighbors who came to the meetings. And they, if they're watching this and they're thinking that this is going to help change it, where do they then go to actually find out? Because this document isn't going to correct that. It's simply a, a direction that the city's going to follow. So, I mean, what, what, what would their expectations be for stuff that's going to move forward from, from this plan in terms of taking care of the water quality issues?
Well, commissioners, if I can, in general, let you know how this plan's going to be implemented. We'll have our plan out there. Once it's adopted, what we plan to do is kind of take this in a different direction with Steve and I and other staff people reporting back to the commissions annually on the comp plan. Here's what we've done, here's what we haven't done. What do you want to work on as part of your work plan discussions with all of the commissions? We'll plan to check in with the council at their all-day work session as well so that this is a working document. And things may change along the way. We'll be able to address those, but that's how we plan to purposefully implement the plans that have been, been drafted by us.
Quite honestly, that sounds great. And, and I think it shows how, you know, the comp plan can become something that actually does drive the city in a more, in a more obvious sense than just being a plan for the long term.
And, and I would add to that quickly. I think in the past, we would have a water resource management plan document over here and a comp plan over here, and the water resource management document would really drive things, and they, the two of them weren't always together. So, if you're looking at the comp plan, you might wonder where are these projects coming from? And so, as Jenny mentioned, now with, with the water resource management plan informing the, the comp plan chapter, then as we do our annual capital improvement program, if you start looking through it now, a lot of the topics and things you're seeing here, those are the things we'll be able to talk to the council about. So, in the past, we didn't, we wouldn't refer to the comp plan as part of our capital improvement program. We will now. It'll be embedded all the way through, and it'll be a checklist, like Jenny said. It'll be, the implementation plan is meant to link the two. And so, at the end of the year, we can do a check-in and say, "Are we following what we said we were going to do in our comp plan?" And drive it. And so, so those residents who turned out for this don't see their ideas just get lost someplace in space and never know how, how did those get implemented or how do we follow through?
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Minkie, Commissioner Braddock.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to echo a couple of comments. I think, I think, you know, it's nice, first of all, to, to turn this over to the next chapter. We've been working on this, and you guys have been working on it a lot. I'd like to thank Mark and his group. I thought they did a great job of presenting stuff to us. And I, I know parts of it were new, but I really liked the implementation piece on every single one. I do think some of them are a little more succinct than others. I think economics and neighborhood housing, I mean, the neighborhood housing, the implementation is 11 pages long. So, there's, there's a lot of, a lot there. I think the land use one's real specific, and I think it's kind of, the tough thing there, though, is the very first line in land use implementation is changing all of our zoning to match everything. So, it's one sentence, but it's a pretty daunting task. And, and then Steve, I, I've said this before, but the city services, I think it is, it is chapter eight and it's the last chapter, but I believe it's truly one of the most important chapters we've got. It's what we're about from a municipality. It's what we do. We take care of our citizens. We provide for safety and we provide for clean water and we, we provide good streets and, and, not to take away from the rest of the chapters, but it's a, it's, in my opinion, the most important thing we've got. And your implementation there is pretty specific, too. It, it zeroes back in on how we're going to, to get where we're, where we're going to get. So, I want to thank you for that, too. So, I think it's great work and it should be a great working document going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Braddock. Any other questions from the commission? Savants, Mr. Walter.
I just want a quick follow-up on a, a comment I had made at our last meeting with Jenny about our future land use map and some discussion that had happened throughout the process specific to the Cliff Road Business Park. And as I was thinking about this, I was thinking about another part of Burnsville, on the South Cross area that's zoned industrial, both of those. And the only reason I bring it up is because it is something that we had discussed about opening up zoning in the Cliff Road Business Park area. And I know it had come up at the Economic Development Commission meeting as well. Once these, the future land zone, land use map is implemented, can those areas be modified in the future?
Mr. Chair, when you look at the land use guide map, we have complete flexibility for, the zoning has to match what that land use guide map is, but there's several different industrial zoning districts. And we get to specify what types of uses go in that. If we're talking adding, changing it to residential, that would require a comprehensive plan amendment to amend the map, and we have to go to the Met Council to get that approved. So, there's great flexibility within that general land use category for what specific types of uses can go there. But when you think more broadly of what type of area it is, if you think about changing that, um, or, uh, changing that direction, then we would have to change the map.
Okay. And to narrow that down, when I look at, um, the South Cross Industrial Area, um, the last, uh, this year, we, we have ran across a couple of applications. In fact, at our last, uh, meeting we did with the showroom, um, where PUDs are, we're having to amend things to get in a showroom, um, and other things that aren't industrial. Um, and that area seems to be more welcoming to business that doesn't fit necessarily industrial. So, uh, if that area continues to go that direction, is, is a, is a complete overhaul of a zoning area necessary?
Um, I think it depends. Well, you're gonna have a discussion later tonight that talks about specific land use processes. Um, I think it depends how far those changes end up going over time, right? So some retail there, the whole area as a whole, when you think of it, it's not a retail area. It may be a business-to-business service, certainly falls within the zoning. It's more wholesaling, which is certainly a type of commercial activity, but it's not retail. I think it's just depends, um, on as the zoning changes, how drastically the zoning changes to affect the ultimate land use of an area.
Okay.
I don't think we're there yet. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think we're there yet. Where we would have to look at making a land use change to a commercial area.
Okay. It just, it felt like a slow creep in the South Cross area specifically. And then in the Cliff Road District, uh, or what are we, uh, Cliff Road Business Park, it was just something that had come up about how do we spur activity even though the occupancy rate is extremely good in that area? But how do we revitalize that area? And one of the concepts was opening up zoning to allow more than just, um, artisan contract, kind of that type of business use in that area. And I was thinking if, if retail or otherwise wanted to, it should be something we could consider. But I think at one point, we had discussed that that's not something that staff has ever run across, that people aren't coming and knocking down the doors to go in that area.
Well, we're talking about two areas here. When South Cross went in, there was a lot of pressure for it to be retail. And the previous council said, no, retail's gonna end pretty much at County Road Five or the Judicial Railroad tracks. That was a conscious decision. Um, and then retail picks up on the Savage side, right? As soon as you hit the Savage border, it picks up. So, um, these are big policy decisions. I mean, you talk about the creep, there is that creep. When those decisions are made on a case-by-case basis of what, um, the Planning Commission recommends and the council approves, go in there, there absolutely is that creep. I, I don't think we're there yet in this discussion. Again, when you think more generally, it's more of an industrial area. You think of the number of employees and kind of the types of businesses where they work at. It's very much industrial. Very good question, though. Um, Cliff Road, um, if we allowed retail, I think you would see more retail. Uh, but as we've learned from the economic analysis that we did, it's very successful for industrial. And the industrial area is head of household jobs, there's a value that's added to it. Uh, retail is more in flux. When we had the recession, you know, because Burnsville's so diverse in its land use, we had very minimal impacts from a land use standpoint. When you look at the number of vacancies that we had, very little, um, during the recession because we did not overbuild. When the market wanted retail to go all the way down Forty-two to Savage, um, we didn't have that overbuilding. In fact, we have more people who want to locate here, and there's no place for them, um, back then. So that served the community very well. So it is a balancing act of, um, and I believe, after going through that, and, and I think there was another recession before that that I've lived through, when we have a balance of uses in a community, the impacts of these changes in the market, we are going to be less impacted by any one, uh, major change in any one sector. We're gonna be able to ride that through more successfully instead of having all of our eggs in one basket. And when the bubble burst, I mean, we were, we were not as bad off as other communities.
Good. That was very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I didn't have any recommendations, I just wanted a little piece of clarification on that. And I would also echo everything everybody's said. You guys have done a fantastic job, um, on this process. So, um, I suppose at this point, we need to make a recommendation for the city council. And we have a-
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh?
It's my honor and privilege to move to the Planning Commission, recommend to the City Council approval of the draft twenty forty comprehensive plan update and authorize submission to neighboring jurisdictions for required six-month review and comment period.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, and the motion carries. And that will go before the city council next Tuesday. Somebody help me out, um, the date of next Tuesday is the nineteenth, at five-thirty. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion of Planning Commission Work Plan Item, Study Zoning Uses and Economic Competitiveness. That is our last meeting. I apologize, let's try this again. I needed the future land use map. Our next item is a discussion of Planning Commission Work Plan Item. No. We just did the item number three, yeah. I was right. Discussion of Planning Commission. Who said no? Commission Work Plan Item, Study Zoning Uses and Economic Competitiveness.
Thank you, Chair.
And Mr. Weber is presenting. Sorry for the flub there.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Chair.
Fight the head cold, so I might, not all there tonight.
The Planning Commission. Um, you know, uh, as was introduced, this is a, one of the elements on the work plan. Um, but, you know, even with some of the discussion here, uh, just before in the comprehensive plan, when you get into zoning, there's, uh, lots of details. So, um, what WSB has done, uh, was two things. First was to compare Burnsville with Apple Valley, Bloomington, Eagan, Lakeville, Savage, and Shakopee. Uh, as was noted in the memo, this is a little different comparison cities than normally you have. You know, normally Plymouth and Minnetonka might be added. But, uh, when you're looking, if we're looking at where a business would locate, the Twin Cities is large enough that somebody looking in the West Metro is probably not looking south of the river as well. So we tried to look at communities of similar markets, uh, around Burnsville. And then second step was to, uh, look at all the uses that are permitted in the other cities, uh, and specifically if they're treated differently in Burnsville, meaning that they're conditional or interim uses. So, um, I'm starting kinda backwards. I'm starting with the summary and go into a little bit more detail. But, um, as you may recall from when we had the architectural, uh, materials, there's, it's not a completely linear analysis of how, uh, business friendly a community is. So we did, uh, two different continuums. The first one here, uh, the vertical, or sorry, the horizontal axis, this is the same on both of these manuals. Uh, non-specific land use guidance is on, uh, the right. Very specific land use guidance is on the left, meaning, uh, if a community's code just simply says retail or manufacturing, that's very general. Where if you get into, um, agricultural machinery, manufacturing, you're getting very specific. Um, so that is one axis. And then the other one is, uh, how many zones do you have? How many different partitions of the city? As, uh, uh, Community Development Director Faulkner said, there, there is some advantages to having, uh, diversity. But, uh, at the same time, if you go to the extreme that Bloomington does, that they have two different sections of the code that addresses zoning districts. They have twenty-three different zoning districts. And when we looked on the map, um, they don't use a lot of them. They don't even exist, they're in the code, but there isn't a piece of property that's actually zoned that. So, uh, looking at, uh, Burnsville here, you're on the more specific side. You have more individual, uh, business descriptions, and you are towards more zoning districts. Um, essentially, you have four commercial districts, you have five industrial districts, and you have three mixed-use districts. So, um, you know, that, that is more than most communities. Another way to look at this, again, the, uh, horizontal axis is the same. But looking at the administrative process, essentially meaning how many, uh, uses are permitted or could be, uh, reviewed by staff such as PUD amendments and the like. And in that case, uh, you're actually the, the most friendly. You're, uh, that gap maybe is a little too extreme. Eagan, Shakopee, Lakeville are pretty, uh, can be fairly accommodating. But then when you get down to Apple Valley and Savage, essentially, everything that's not permitted needs to go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, City Council, where you have some, uh, areas where that is, uh, shorter than other communities. So what we tried to do to try to, to compare, as I stated, with some communities are very, um, very broad with just manufacturing or warehousing, and some communities get very specific. Uh, we needed a mechanism to, to compare them equally. And there's, uh, a classification system out there called the North American Industrial Classification System, uh, that pretty much addresses all employment uses. And so, uh, there are twenty different types of, uh, NAICS categories. And so we broke them into those twenty categories. What we're showing here in green is, the way the code works is, uh, as you increase in the number of numbers, it gets more specific. The two-digit code is pretty much kinda that most general. We have thirty-one to thirty-three, which is manufacturing. We have forty-four to forty-five, which is retail trade. It's a very broad category. If you go one step further, uh, it starts to break it out into, uh, say, retail trade, a little bit more specific food or, um, you know, uh, uh, building supply. If you go into a four-digit, now all of a sudden you're into grocery stores or convenience stores. So the more numbers, uh, the more specific it is. If you look at the, the charts that you have in your, your, uh, binder, which by the way, I will apologize, we had a snafu when we were preparing this. We printed it out to be bound on the top. So if you look, when you go to some of the pages, one side's actually upside down. That machine broke, so we had to bind it on the side. All the sheets are there, they're just not laid out the way they were the, the last time. But what we could do from there was, we could look at how many communities have these broad categories as permitted uses, and how many communities start getting into conditional or interim uses. And from there, we could compare each other. So what we did in the white columns here was basically, if all of the uses in that category were permitted, you were the top or the, the most friendly city, which got you a one. If you were a community that had conditional uses where many other communities had permitted, you got a seven. So we could kinda rank everything that way. If you look down towards the very bottom now, uh, well, maybe I'll just start. At, at the top, the, I'd say the first four categories are not things that we're typically looking at in our commercial or industrial uses. Uh, agriculture being the first one, mining the second one, utilities, uh, which are generally all over your city, construction, which is the construction of buildings, that, that's temporary. But when we compared the rankings for Burnsville for all twenty of them, and came up with the average ranking, you're actually the most friendly city. Your, your average ranking's two-point-two, uh, Bloomington is two-point-four, but then many of the other communities are in the threes and fours. So as a whole, you're a very, uh, clear city when a business comes in of, of what's allowed, where is it allowed? Uh, you'll have some districts where it's permitted outright, some commit, other zones may be conditional. But what we did in the column in the gray on the far left, which is what we'll get into more detail here soon, is what are the considerations that, uh, the Planning Commission could have to basically make yourself number one in that category? So even though you are very friendly, there are other areas where other communities are, are more friendly. So then, uh, again, this is the chart of the, um, the individual uses and the individual districts. And again, to kinda repeat what the, the colors are, green is you, those are general categories, just retail, just wholesaling, such. Yellow are the three-digit categories, so we're starting to break into little subsections. But then when you're getting into the white, you are getting to very specific types of businesses. So in essence, when you look through that document, when you see cities that have a lot of green, it's a very generic, uh, listing. Cities that have a lot of white are very specific. That doesn't mean you're friendly or, or less friendly, but it does mean something for, uh, you know, somebody who maybe is a business owner who doesn't really spend much time in the development or land use, uh, realm, starting to look at all these categories may be more complicated compared to just looking at wholesale or retail. So there's, uh, from that, there's actually fifteen considerations we'd like to discuss with you. Um, of those fifteen, fourteen are specific to uses. And then finally, the fifteenth is, uh, specific to the approval process. And again, these are things to consider that would make you as friendly as the, uh, friendliest city in, uh, this research. The first one is manufacturing. In manufacturing, you have industrial food production and commercial bakery that are conditional uses. Um, in talking with staff, uh, there have been in the past and continues to be some comments about some odors that come from those businesses. Uh, so, uh, staff's recommendation is actually to keep those conditional because that is the purpose of the judiciary's permit. You're able to, uh, look at the environment and the neighboring properties, setbacks, uh, additional mechanisms to try to deal with odor. So while other communities allow, uh, industrial food production or commercial bakery as, uh, permitted, uh, use, uh, we're not recommending that. Chair, I might pause here. Do you want me to kinda go briefly through all fifteen, and then we can come back one by one? Or would you like to tackle them?
Why don't we go, uh, one at a time? Cause then if we have questions, um, since there are fifteen of them, um, we can get them while they're fresh. Unless it'd be easier to come back. Um, is there any questions on the manufacturing, uh, as far as the industrial food production goes from the commissioners?
Sure.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm just curious where, and mainly because of where I live. I'm on the west side of town, and we do have some food production areas, uh, east of us. Um, you know, when you say industrial food production, provided all operations are fully contained within the building, um, does that mean that there is abs, uh, if they're, if they're totally contained within the building, then how can there be anything out into the air?
Quality ingredients?
Yep. Usually when they're drying, usually when they're drying cheese, but anyway.
Yeah, so those, those are really what it's at. Um, you know, related, that's the biggest one that we get, um, comments on. No quality ingredients.
They create dried cheese. So the cheese pack is that you get, and that is part of the process.
Different, um, flavorings and things.
Yeah, and depending on, and some of them you can't tell, and sometimes the wind isn't blowing the right way. But when you compare that to a commercial production bakery, I, I, I don't quite see the, the significance because to me, a bakery has a very pleasing smell. And there again, is that just something that's unique, that it's picked out? I mean, these two are specifics, uh, specifically picked out here.
I know for a bakery, it's pleasing unless you smell it a lot.
Yep.
And everywhere and every day, kind of a thing.
And perhaps if there's a gluten issue and stuff, that might, yeah, I get, which is new.
Or if you're like me, and you'd really like to eat that stuff, you really shouldn't.
Right.
You get to smell it, it's like, dang it.
Well, right, but I, and I guess, you know, I don't, I'm not objecting to it, I'm just, uh, every, every one of these, to me, has a need to sort of look at the context. And also, uh, maybe even a brief discussion of, of why they're currently not, why it's currently not permitted. I mean, if we're being asked to bring it in, there's a reason why it wasn't in before. And it was just something that we didn't catch? Or is it something that things have changed? And that context, I think, is very important.
I think for a lot of the uses, um, just in general, um, a lot of the uses get added to the zoning ordinance over the years based on, you know, what somebody wants to do. Uh, so you get that. Um, also, there are, you know, special studies that look into different things, and Burnsville has done those, uh, multiple times, looking at general, you know, commercial, and just trying to be, you know, up to date, uh, with, with things. So, uh, they get, they get added that way. I think in this analysis, um, uh, what our consultant has tried to do is to be able to compare us to other communities, you know, used a, a system. And then just in taking a look at the findings, um, staff has worked with WSB, you know, for, because we know that the direction, um, from Planning Commission and Council, um, I think tends to be more, how can we make these happen without having to go through, you know, these various hoops?
Right.
Um, now, we did find out that, you know, Burnsville is very well situated in those. Um, but there are, there are always improvements or modifications. So we just tried to outline, uh, some, uh, ideas that we had just in being knowledgeable about the types of, um, uses that are coming to the city or have been here, um, have operated, uh, those types of things to try to get to that objective.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Um, I just have a quick follow-up. Um, how many food manufacturing plants do we have in Burnsville currently right now? Besides the one that we just mentioned, do we know?
No, I don't, we don't have a listing of the, uh, that, we don't have listings of the types of uses.
Candy has moved completely, or are they, they're, okay. That would have been the other one.
Is Leontine still over by the high school?
Leontine, yeah, we have that, yeah.
That, during two days, and you had to smell that?
[laughing]
I forgot about that. Has there been any application for food production that has been turned away because of this?
No.
Not since I've been here.
No.
Only two years.
Not in the thirteen, going on thirteen years that I've been here either.
Okay.
No.
All right, those are my only questions.
Okay, the next category is retail. We identify liquor stores and stone monument sales, which are conditional uses. I will pause a little bit just to say, we're looking at uses and how, you know, whether they're permitted, permitted and as an accessory use, conditional interim. The table we give you doesn't address other regulations. In the case of liquor stores, there's a liquor license that's needed. So, you know, we're proposing that that becomes permitted because there's another mechanism to address any issues that would come up from a liquor store through the liquor license. For stone monument sales, it's similar. What I would take is similar types of businesses, building material sales, commercial greenhouses, garden supply stores. Those are all permitted uses. But then if they require outdoor storage, they have to come in for a conditional use permit for that outdoor storage. So the proposal would be to move stone monument sales to a permitted use. But if they needed outdoor storage, they would still have to come and get that conditional use permit.
Any questions there?
Nope.
Nope.
Very good.
Good. So accessory retail. This one is you're allowed to have up to twenty percent of the floor area be accessory retail to a maximum of a thousand square feet. And then you could come in and get a conditional use permit if your building, if your twenty percent was greater than a thousand. The proposal is just to remove that one thousand limitation. Any building, they could have twenty percent accessory retail and therefore they don't have to come in and get a conditional use permit. There is no conditional use permit process for that then. They would have to come in and get a PUD or request a text amendment if they needed more than twenty percent accessory retail. But it's just make the permitted allowance just a flat twenty percent.
Mr. Regard?
Chair, I would agree. I think, you know, we deal, this kind of goes back to your question you had earlier to Ms. Faulkner about South Cross area and some of the stuff we struggled with there. And once again, Commissioner Singh and I that have been around for a hundred years, we've done a lot with the thousand square foot thing. And that's always been, in my mind, has been a really difficult thing to deal with. So of all, there's several things in here I think are really important, but I think that is a go and we should, we should.
Yeah, I support that. Because, Mr. Chair, I think penalizing the bigger square foot building, the twenty percent, you only can go to a thousand. And if the building is big, why not go to twenty percent? Whether it's fifteen hundred.
I agree.
Sure.
Mr. Ranky?
Doesn't this start to erode the issue of trying to not allow the South Cross area as a specific area, as a retail area?
Really, I think because it's allowed, CUP is, you know, allowed, but you can look at conditions. So I think because it's already, you know, in that, it's a matter of the process to be able to do it.
Right.
Do we want them to come in through hearings and whatnot? Because they always, they always could apply for that CUP. And I know the ones that have, I believe, have been approved.
Right. And then, so, and it's really, you're allowed up to twenty percent of the size of any building with no top limit. But if you want to go more than that, then you don't get a CUP. You have to come back for a PUD or other.
Yep, or to amend the ordinance for, yep, a different amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I agree with Mr. Regard. I think it's a very business-friendly idea.
If I could, I'm going to take the next two together because I did actually, I did too quick of a copy and paste in here. Warehouse and wholesale, while they list them out kind of as two separate categories, well, wholesale is actually number forty-two. It's its own use. Warehousing, they count it as a subsection of transportation, but in a lot of times, they have very similar impacts. A lot of trucks, a lot of dock doors, that kind of thing. Warehousing is a conditional use in the B three, which is generally the Highway thirteen corridor. Wholesaling is actually not permitted at all in the B three. Now, it's permitted in the industrials. But the recommendation, or the consideration we're asking is not only should wholesale be added to the B three, but be allowed to be a permitted use. And that would be the same for warehouse, move that into a permitted use. As we talked about earlier, you know, we looked at the impacts that could come from businesses like this. Is there other mechanisms that could address that? Both the outdoor storage would still have to be a conditional use permit if they chose to have outdoor storage, those locations. And there are parking standards specific to fleets in your ordinance. So how the trucks are parked, how many are there? That's all addressed, other places in your code as well. So it's adding these two uses as permitted uses in the B three. Wholesale is not allowed at all currently in the B three. Warehousing is allowed as a conditional use. But in our staff's past experience, wholesale and warehousing really have the same, a very similar appearance and function.
I tend to agree on that. So any questions on wholesale warehousing?
Sure.
Mr. Ranky?
Wholesale showroom, so are we talking at Costco or Sam's Club? In general?
I would not because if you looked at the floor space, where the customer, the retail is, is over fifty percent. You know, that's more, retail is the primary use and the wholesaling is secondary. Wholesaling would be mostly businesses that sell to other businesses. But then they might have a retail component where you could also buy from them directly.
Costco, anybody can buy from Costco.
Right, but he's saying that it's not Costco because Costco is really more retail. So I get that. But that was sort of confusing to me too because I was thinking Costco. And I know Sam's Club used to be down in, on thirteen. And that was, would have generated a different questions. So I understand what that is now. Thank you.
I guess I would think Abdala at some point would have been considered wholesale. Even though they had a retail component.
Right.
But they're a wholesale.
Were they manufacturing?
They were manufacturing.
You get into some of the businesses and, you know, when you calculate your parking, you are kind of, it's this much manufacturing, it's that much warehousing, it's that much retail. You know, some of those kind of tend to blend in. But that's kind of the idea. If out of there, Abdala is selling and delivering things to other businesses, but you could also go there as an accessory and get retail. That's that kind of.
Well, what came to mind is there's, is it Cambria Coffee in Shakopee? They do that big coffee and soup sale every year. They're a B to B business, but they'll have a wholesale sale for a weekend. I think there is some interaction there and that I think is where I wrap my head around this. So any other questions on wholesale or? All right.
If I could, was that general consensus to?
Yeah, I think, yep.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. So information, this is actually one area where we're asking to be a little more restrictive in that information, you currently have a single use that is data and call center. Now, I think data centers are maybe changing a little bit, but it's certainly getting in people's minds of, data center nowadays is, you know, a large amount of servers that do cloud storage and the like. You know, it's a fairly low intensity use, both in vehicles and people. It's really housing information. Where a call center is typically the exact opposite. You know, it's the smallest cubicles and the smallest desk possible having people call and communicate. So you end up having the opposite impacts. You have a lot of cars, a lot of traffic. So the consideration is actually to split that definition in two. It would leave data centers as permitted, but it would actually move call centers to conditional, mostly for the reason of they typically have more parking demand than a normal office. So that would be something you could address through a conditional use permit of how are they addressing the shifts or whatever it is that have less of an impact on the neighborhood. So this one's actually looking to be a little bit more restrictive in taking out that call center and making it specifically conditional.
Okay. Commissioner Regard?
Thank you, Chair. Staff, I might have a question. I was trying to work through this in my head when we talked about the difference between data and a data center, a call center and the parking issue. The previous two categories, both in wholesale and warehouse, we kind of had the caveat is parking is regulated separately. And so that's not an issue. And why, help me in my head, then why is parking not regulated separately for a call center? Does that make sense why I'm asking that question? Because in wholesale and warehouse, we kind of felt it was okay. And I agree. And I guess I don't disagree with the information. But why can't, if parking is regulated is going to work for wholesale and for warehouse, then why is our regulated parking process not going to just handle the call center piece?
I believe that the reason for that is generally with warehouse and wholesale showrooms, they are not large traffic generators. We do currently have those as specific standards. With a call center, it could be, you know, it could be that they have a hundred people coming in. It could be that they have twenty-five people. You know, it's not, I think the use, the question is, you know, the number of folks that you're going to have and parking related to that. So I think that that would drive on.
I was, I got, yeah, go ahead.
Well, if I could add on to that. So you probably could address it through parking. I think you would want to evaluate the parking standards, make sure call centers are specifically called out. But if you went to actually implement this, being a permitted use, if it's currently some office and a call center business wants to move into that building, since it's a permitted use, I don't know that there's a mechanism that you could deny them even though they may be non-conforming with the amount of parking stalls. I don't know what the mechanism is.
In that case, we do follow through the building code and their occupancy standards. And they have to, all uses, when they change, you have to still meet the parking standard. So if they don't have enough parking, then they need to make provisions in order to be able to do that.
So if you wish to leave call centers as a permitted use, I would recommend that you review the parking standards and make sure that that addresses call centers.
Which would mean that we would have to have a standard that would work for all types of call centers.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah. And do we know enough about that?
Well, if I may, I, this is not a parking study, but we looked at parking just in the purfery to see, you know, is this an issue with these uses? Burnsville probably more than other communities address parking on employment, a shift or an employment basis, where a lot of other communities do it just on a square footage. So that might be a way to address a call center is, you know, show us your floor plan. How many desks do you have? How many employees do you have? So you could do a parking standard on an employment basis, not a square footage basis. Then you might be able to address different types of call centers.
Mr. Regard, do you have a follow-up?
So I don't, I don't mean to continue to derail the conversation. I was just questioning, is there a way that we could streamline this a bit from a standpoint of the size? Or, because I don't disagree. I travel in a particular area and I'm not going to name the bank, but there's a national bank that has a call center in an area that I drive through every day that they've completely taken over the entire area. You can't park, you can't walk, you can't do anything because the city of Minneapolis allowed a use in an area that it simply cannot handle. So that being a concern of mine, I'm not saying more regulation, but I was just kind of hoping since we had the conversation about, you know, parking can be regulated, could it be as a simple, if I'm going to have a call center, that thirty percent of the employees are going to work from home, which is a fairly simple process in today's world versus the number of people that are going to be there? If it's a call center and it fits into this category, it's just, it's approved or, you know, it doesn't have to come for a conditional use permit versus whatever the parking is, what I was trying to get at. And I don't know how we handle that. Doesn't necessarily have to be a top priority as we rank all these, but it was just something I felt, I was confused as I thought through. Thank you, Chair, I'm done.
We could consider employee count on premise would be, I think, a defining factor because I think you're right, their call centers aren't maybe typically what they were ten or even five years ago because people do work from home and can still do those things. And a call center could be fifteen people or it could be three hundred people.
Chair, I mean. There was a call center on the corner of South Cross and Forty-two for a while. They sold items and it took over part of the building, if I remember correctly. And basically, that parking lot was maxed all day. And then when they moved, now it's empty. So, I mean, I'm just saying that it can have a huge impact. And there may be an opportunity to do what staff is recommending and then revisit it down the road and address the parking once we figure it out.
And I think it also boils down to, how many applications for call centers have we had in the last twelve to twenty-four months?
I think the big thing from, looking at it from a staff standpoint is the, to differentiate between data center and call center because we're seeing, you know, other cities are getting these data centers and it's completely different from a call center. So separating those uses is, you know, priority one from a staff standpoint. And then everything else, we can look at it from, is it a parking? Do we need to examine the parking? Do we need to examine, is this a conditional use permit process? But separating those two, I think, is the biggest from our standpoint.
So for the sake of our conversation tonight, we're landing on differentiating between data and call center? And then the details that we've discussed, if we want to continue that conversation or leave, or we would have to create a new definition for call center and data center by splitting the two?
I mean, the next steps after all of this is to decide what should move forward as possible ordinance changes or keep, you know, as is. So that may be one of them, direction to staff is to look at potential code changes affecting data and call centers. It may just be as simple as that for now. And then we'll get into the weeds in the future.
I didn't think this was going to be the one we'd spend a lot of time on. I'd say for the sake of continuing this conversation, we can land on splitting the definition of data and call centers. And then maybe at the end, we can create a recommendation and we'll re-follow up on that piece. So, waste management?
Thank you, Chair. Waste management. Well, waste management, there's two things to discuss here. First is you have a lot of titles for waste management that I guess they want a brief conversation. Are they really that different? The first one, you have medical waste transfer facility, which medical waste is a different type of waste by the state standards. But then you have recycling center in the I one and I two. You have recycling comma reclamation in I three. And then you have recycling comma reclamation inside a building in GIM. And then you have recycling reclamation of non-hazardous materials when completely within a building in GIH. I guess, I don't know any examples of how distinct those recycling uses are. What we are recommending is all the definitions have conducted completely within a building. But medical waste transfer facility, I could certainly understand that's a specific type of business. But otherwise, you're dealing with recycling in four different manners. So seems like just shrinking that to recycling comma within and completely within a building would be one recommendation. And then similar to the other uses that can occur completely within a building, allow them to be permitted uses. And then if they need outdoor storage or outdoor processing, they can come back and get a conditional use permit for that outdoor activity.
Commissioner, is there any questions on waste management?
Sure.
I'm not quite sure.
I'm not quite sure what you said about the medical waste. Can you repeat that for me?
Well, medical waste by its definition is, is a separate type of waste. It's, it's not a, it needs to be placed in, in incinerators before it is then disposed.
No, I, I understand that. That part of it I understand.
Yeah.
But when you said that we, we, we separated from, that's what I didn't get. We separated, it has to be done in a building? You said something like that?
Well, what we recommend is all of these definitions have done entirely within a building. And then if they need outdoor operations for some reason, they can come in and get a use permit.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, same, Commissioner Banky?
Thank you. The only thing I could think of here was, you know, recycling has a connotation of household waste. And recycling reclamation has more of a connotation of assembling computers or appliances or things for their parts to ship them to different areas. Now, I, I think that from a big picture, they aren't that much different, but I think from a, to, to drill into them a little bit, they, they are different. Cause the, the traffic generated from them is somewhat different. And I totally agree with all of them being done inside a building or a conditional use permit. I, I just wonder if there's two levels there as opposed to just one.
I guess I'm not experienced with like electronic recycling app and a different traffic impact than normal.
More, 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 the sorting is, is handled differently. It's, it goes out differently. And actually, you know, that doesn't fit under non-hazardous materials anyway because some of that kinda stuff is hazardous and needs to be handled completely differently anyway.
And hazardous waste generator licenses are, are another layer of licensing that, that addresses a lot of that. So when we were talking at a staff level, if it occurs within a building, you know, we don't know whether they're recycling plastic bottles or they're recycling computers. It's, it looks the same from the outside. But if you have an example of how traffic is different between electronics recycling and other recycling, I said, I like that information, but I haven't had that experience in the past.
Yeah, I, I've only seen it done, I've seen it done in areas where it was being handled. Let's say outside of the permitting process. And the methods that were used struck me as significantly different than how the transfer station handles waste and, and things like that. And, you know, maybe in the, in the long run, it's not. It just felt like it was more of a, more intensive.
Commissioner Bridger?
Chair, I, I don't disagree that, that should be interior use and permitted, I think, as we rank all of these categories. We talked about economic competitiveness. This would not be a category that I'd say needs to be at the top of the list for staff. If you get to it, you, you get to it. But, you know, I have some experience operating a facility next to a, a, a recycling facility and it is contained inside, but trucks have to get it there and rail has to get it away. And the smell that was associated with it and everything, so from a, if we're gonna rank these categories top to bottom, where do we wanna start and where do we wanna end? This would, in my opinion, be a high priority.
Yep, agreed.
I concur as well. The next category is education. Now, where you rank a little lower is that you do not allow education in any of your industrial zones, where other communities allow education in, in all of their commercial industrial mixed use. So talking with staff, that was purposeful and I certainly understand why that is. There is a federal law, the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act, that states if you have any use that, kind of by a building code definition, is an assembly use, it assembles large groups of people, you can't pick what type of people gather. So in education, a school is an assembly use. And if you allowed schools in your industrial district, then you would have to allow both places of worship as well as places where people are institutionalized. And this was purposeful in that keeping a, a critical mass of the amount of industrial land for industrial uses. That if you started, if you allowed any one assembly use, you basically have to allow them all. So you have schools that can be allowed in the residential districts, can be allowed in the commercial districts, can be allowed in the mixed use districts. It's just taking one piece of the community, the industrial piece, and saying, no assembly uses there. That's industrial manufacturing wholesale trade. So staff is not recommending adding educational to the industrial districts.
I totally agree with that.
My only follow up is the Burnsville High School is just flirting with industrial, isn't it?
It borders some industrial. I mean, what is it, to the north and to the east is industrial?
But it's not in.
It's own residential.
It's got its own zone.
And plan unit development.
Yeah, okay. I'm comfortable with that as well. Any other question? I'm turning over to Commissioner. Any questions on that? Okay, very good.
Healthcare. So healthcare is, is a pretty broad category, you know, I, you have a hospital, that's kind of its own category cause that's certainly a lot different traffic and parking demands than just a medical clinic than there's the kind of your more typical medical and dental clinics. But then any residential use where you're receiving services also falls into the healthcare category. You guys are equal to being the most friendly for both the hospitals and the medical clinics. There's no issue there. Assisted living facilities, there's a number of communities that allow assisted living in commercial districts. So what we're hoping to get a conversation from you is, are you okay with assisted living in a B-two, B-three, B-four commercial districts? We're not proposing the B-one because that is, you know, very sparse and smaller areas. What I think needs to be weighed is, you know, there are definite reasons where residential might not be allowed or encouraged in the commercial zones. You do have three mixed use zones where you already identified those mixed use. Makes sense to have that retail and the residential. But apart from just simple apartments, assisted living, you know, provides more services, which, you know, unfortunately sometimes requires ambulance or other kinda healthcare that can be difficult in a residential neighborhood, knowing that that would occur, as well as has a population that probably isn't going to be walking around as much to, to all the neighboring businesses. So it's, it's usually a little bit more self-contained, which I think is why some of the other communities think assisted living, separate from just apartments or condominiums, would be allowed in commercial. So staff doesn't really have a recommendation, but wanted to point out that differences with the other communities and would like to hear the planning commission's consideration on allowing assisted living facilities within the B-two, B-three, B-four.
Commissioners, any questions on this piece?
I just have some observations. Well, first off, do we have a definition in the code for assisted living?
I believe you do. I don't have the code. I, there's skilled nursing, there's, I mean, every community names it a little different.
I don't remember going through that when we brought the region suites in, that it was being addressed as a specific, under that specific definition. The reason is.
We have allowed them, I'm not sure if there's, I don't know offhand because there's so many changes to the ordinance.
Sure, sure, sure.
But we have allowed them, I think they're in commercial zones, but under PUDs.
Sure.
I believe all of the ones that we've done, that I can think of have a PUD.
I'm coming out with it. Number one, if we're gonna allow assisted living versus apartments and things, it obviously would need a definition. Okay, second part is that assisted living can require additional services, but it can also benefit from the services that are in a business district. Okay, last thing is, then this, just an observation, cause it really isn't our purview, but business land is typically way more expensive than, than residential land on a per sale basis. And are we changing something that'll never happen? And we're gonna end up like Bloomington where we have a zoning area that doesn't get used. That's it.
If I could just mention, we do have a definition for assisted living.
Okay.
Thank you Regina.
I can read it if you'd like.
No, that's fine. It's there.
Okay.
Is it differentiated in any different subcategories or is it pretty, you don't have to read the whole thing?
I've only looked at the definitions so far, Chair, sorry.
I, any other questions or on this piece? I tend to agree with Commissioner Banky in that commercial land, business land is generally, probably won't wanna keep that as is. Not to say that there's not a use or a need for assisted living. But I'd be, I'm comfortable maintaining that piece as it is. I don't know where the rest of the commission falls on that.
I'd leave it alone.
I would, I would as well.
I agree.
Agreed too. I would just point out, there are communities that do not have mixed use districts. And, you know, your mixed use districts kind of allow that where Savage, for instance, has just simply business and has just simply industrial. Since you have three mixed use districts, you, they have opportunities.
Well, and we've got a lot of really good assisted living facilities in Burnsville as it sits right now, in the rivers and a few others. So, I mean, those are top notch. I don't know how those are zoned, but.
They're generally in, in the business districts. They know that, except that we've done it as PUDs as opposed to the permitted or conditional. One of the benefits is that they, because it's not considered a residential use, so they do generate commercial taxes. So that is one of the reasons that is a benefit. I know that we did include it in our last comprehensive plan as a possibility for how to meet the residential goals. Because we do allow, we don't have that much residential land available, but we've allowed these, you know, I think the majority of them. They're in mix now, which used to be some type of a business zone until a few years ago.
So the ridge, uh, the ridges is on a business piece. And that the, the, the use and zoning didn't change of that. They just, they just did the PUD over it.
Right.
And then the, um, one where the old mall used to be that.
That is it. That's the ridges.
Yep, that's a B, yep, that's a B-three.
Valley Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
And the rivers is zoned.
I think that's a, that's also a B zone with a plan unit development. I can't think of one.
Part of it was residential and, or it was all part of neighborhood business way back when we had that?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
B-two, I believe, yep.
Are we still comfortable leaving it as it is or do we wanna modify it? Okay.
Okay. Then we have two different recreation discussions, recreation health clubs. This actually would be similar to the information, a possibility to actually be a little bit more restrictive. Currently, health clubs are allowed in the B-one, B-two and B-four as permitted uses, with the B-one being more of a neighborhood commercial. Particularly with health clubs are, you know, the modern versions are twenty-four hours a day kinda operations. Whether that should be removed or at least made a conditional use in the B-one. It would be leaving B-two and B-four as it is now, that it's a permitted use in the B-two and B-four. But the B-one, again, particularly with them, almost all of them being twenty-four hours, restricting them to either conditional uses or removing them altogether from the B-one.
Commissioners?
So just, so that's because of the proximity to the residential areas?
Correct.
Got it.
My only resistance to that is, you know, these anytime fitnesses, these kind of, I, I almost consider that as a, a positive, an amenity. If somebody's looking to move into a city, that might be something that they're actually seeking out as a feature within a city, if it's within a proximity to their home. So personally, I don't see any issue with it, but I'd be willing to hear anybody else out there.
I guess comments I'd make on it is, being adjacent to residential, I think the issues are gonna be traffic. And obviously it's minimal traffic, but it's the lights being on twenty-four hours and it's the twenty-four hour traffic at night, I think is where the biggest impact on a residential area would be.
But I would imagine it would still be subject to the light ordinance trap. Traffic, I think, would probably be the main concern.
I mean, lights are supposed to be turned, I mean, we're gonna get into lights on another one I saw too, but yet they need the lights on if they're gonna be there twenty-four hours. So does the conditional use allow us to manage the hours, which we probably don't wanna have to do? Or does the conditional use allow us to look at each location for its unique characteristics? And maybe this building doesn't impact the adjacent residential area, so it's fine.
As it sits right now, it's permitted use in B-one.
Right. And the recommendation is to remove it from B-one. And my suggestion might be to put, leave it in B-one as a conditional use so that it can be addressed on a case by case basis. Because I think that staff is right on this one, is there's, there's probably a need to look at this a little bit tighter with the change from a large, you know, fitness place to the, the small ones that take up one or two bays in a mall.
Yeah, and that's why.
The market's changed.
Yeah. And that's why I, I don't think a YMCA and an anytime fitness are in the same category. Okay. So could we modify that to, unless anybody else has any thoughts on that? I, I like the idea of a conditional use within a B-one. Does anybody have any objection to that?
Makes sense.
Very good.
So then the other recreation is the specific category of sports performance training center. It is currently a conditional use in the I-one, I-two and the G-I-M zones. This is one that we've found other communities allow them as permitted uses. These are industrial zones, so I don't think you're gonna have the same impact to neighboring residential, so that certainly makes sense. I would also point out, the only other, you know, downside I've seen with them is, and that's what I listed with West St. Paul and Rose Mountain, Savage is, often the request is that it's a fabric inflatable building. But that still doesn't change it from allowing it as a permitted use. Your building material standards would require that if somebody was coming in with a fabric inflatable building, they'd have to come in with another level of approval, whether it's a good issues permit or a PUD. So if it could occur completely within a typical masonry or tip-up panel constructed industrial building, it's just a permitted use. If they need some modifications for either outdoor storage or building materials, they'd have to come in front of the city for those approvals.
Commissioners, any questions on recreation, sports training centers?
Good suggestion. Yeah, I, I agree with it.
Yep, very good.
Okay. Let me just look. I, I, maybe we only have fourteen. I, I didn't strike waste management, so we'll skip that one. It's the same, same one. Food service, when we looked, food service is not allowed in, in all of the business districts. It's not allowed in the B-three. So staff is actually recommending adding it to the B-three. The way the ordinance is, is currently written, drive-throughs would be addressed through conditional use permit. Parking has its own standards. The only thing I would consider would be, make it a permitted use, but it might be worth visiting what your outdoor seating regulations are. Cause that is becoming more of an issue. First with the Clean Air Act, got a lot more people that go outside because they have to smoke. But particularly in the summer and even in the spring and the fall, a lot of businesses really want outdoor seating. Maybe music with that outdoor seating shouldn't prevent it from being a permitted use, the restaurant itself. You just may wanna look at what your outdoor seating regulations are and whether they're kinda up to the, the common business practice.
Commissioners, any questions on this piece?
Clarification?
Commissioner Banky?
For, for, okay, B-one is in a residential area, B-two, for, you know, B-two is for. For, for, okay, B1 is, in a residential area, B2, for, you know, B2 is for, are, are B2 zoning covers what ki, what areas would we could call a B2 zoning?
B1 is neighborhood. B2 is?
Some more community or?
Well, isn't, wasn't B4 42, B3 is kind of 13, and then B2 is the other commercial nodes on your other?
You look at the collectors.
That sounds right, I mean, uh.
B2, yeah, is, oh, B2 is office business, I think. B1 is neighborhood business. So these are more office-type uses.
But there, but there again, a B2 office has a need for restaurants, so that makes a lot of sense. And moving restaurants permitted in mix, permitted in B3, which would be down by 13. Yeah, and, you know, I, do we have a need for additional regu, I mean, do we, what are our current regulations on outdoor seating?
If they're adjacent to residential, we require a conditional use permit.
So that's B1, pretty much.
Yeah, residential.
Yeah, or the edge of a B2 where we have residential against it.
And we have had a lot of, you know, the different restaurants, remember, people coming out concerned about, you know, what the outdoor seating, that, that tends to be the biggest.
Right.
Issue for the residents.
But, and, and not to drag this out too long, new, new facilities know this upfront, and I would presume that the DRC is encouraging them to place the outdoor seating in areas where it's not going to impact the adjacent neighbors.
Yes.
It's a nice thing with redevelopment is you get to do it right. Thank you.
Um, I just had one quick follow-up question, does distilleries, breweries, things like that fall under food services? Is that a separate definition?
It would be separate.
Okay.
Yep.
Then that's all I have? Okay.
So of the uses, the, the final one is other services, which is where veterinary clinics fall. Your current definition says, or your current title is veterinary clinics slash hospitals, not including outdoor runs, are a conditional use. And similar to the, many of the other uses, if everything happens indoors, i.e. not having an indoor, an outdoor run, that would be permitted. And then if they needed that outdoor activity, they would come and get a conditional use permit.
Any questions on that, other services, please?
Observing that sometimes it's very hard to keep the parking inside the building.
And there are, there is, I know that noise issues have come up, you know, with tenants. We've discussed that for like some of the doggy daycare things over the years.
Sure.
But if you look at the zoning districts that, that it's in, it's B3 and it's I1. It's not I2 or I4 or some of them.
Oh, permitted use, oh, okay, never mind. Never mind. Sounds good.
Very good.
Okay, then the final one is the one process recommendation. Currently, the DRC can only approve PUD amendments if the size of the building, the cube of the building, doesn't increase by more than 10%. The request is to, to go up to 50%. I think that would reduce the amount of PUD amendments you see in front of you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, thank you.
Can you define what cube is? I mean.
The footprint.
So.
The perimeter of the building.
So the building could increase 50% and staff would handle it and planning commission wouldn't see a thing and council wouldn't see a thing?
Correct. As long as they met all their other performance standards.
Building materials, parking.
Yeah, and I, I personally have a huge problem with that, and mainly it's because of things I'm seeing in other areas, in other cities where I'm presenting. And I'm seeing feedback from councils and planning commissions when they find out that a building changed and they didn't know about it. Edina, Savage, Shock P. I've seen numerous comments to that effect, where a council was appalled that a apartment building that was shown to them with significant tree cover was changed administratively as it was allowed. And basically, there were no trees left because they had to put ponds in instead. And basically, the, the observation was that if that would have come back to them, it would have changed their vote, and perhaps that apartment building would not have been approved in its form. So, it's sort of an issue, I think, that I've spoken about before, but I, I think it's, I think it's critical that if we're gonna have a planning commission and a council that are to review items, that that, that is a huge change to a project.
I, I agree with Commissioner Benke. I, I think at 50%, I think that would warrant some type of a public hearing process as well, because if you've got that significant of a change happening, that might draw some attention from the public and they might want to be involved in that process too, just purely from a transparency standpoint. I don't know, it, was there any, what was the desire from staff to move beyond the 10% other than just getting applications through maybe quicker?
I think it's a matter of getting applications through quicker and taking away some of the hoops that people want to go through. The percentage is totally up to planning commission and council.
Chair, if I could, do you think there's any room for a compromise?
Well, that was my next question. Where does the rest of the commission fall on this? Because Commissioner Benke and I have both spoken, Commissioner Broderick.
Thank you, Chair. I would fall a little in a different standpoint here. I, I would be in support of this process. I think, I, I was happy to see this from the standpoint of, you know, as, you did a great job putting this together, and I appreciate that. And you kind of noted that we were in most cases a, a little more accommodating than most communities. I'd like the caveat to be that in today's world, we have to be. We're completely developed. We're gonna, if we're gonna get redevelopment and if we're gonna be competitive with a community where there's a greenfield, this is one less thing that's pushed in, in front of somebody. I don't know necessarily if we are saying that we're approving a 50% tonight. I think what we're saying is we believe there should, this needs to be high on the priority list and that we, we need to address this, and it may land at 50, it may land somewhere else. But I would be in full support of, of, I think 10% is very restrictive. We are a, we are a community of planned unit developments, that's what we are. And I believe if we're gonna spur redevelopment, we've got to figure out a way to handle this through the design review committee. And maybe the, the number is somewhere between 10 and 50, but I would say it needs to be closer to 50, because really this is, if 50% or more, it comes back to us. If, if it's 50% or less, and that's, you know, you got to put that in perspective. If it's a 10,000 square foot building, it's, we're only adding 5,000 square foot to the, to the footprint. You know, it, it's a bigger deal if it's a 350,000 square foot building and, you know, we're gonna take it to 450. But I, I was excited to, to see this in here from a standpoint of easing the application process for, for applicants.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
I gotta go back to the quote here on second paragraph of the summary. Burnsville has the friendliest approval process of the market cities already. And personally, I would love to see that 10% taken down to five or less. I, I can't fathom how a person can bring in a project and get an approval and then change it and have that approval stand, because so much of what is being approved is the design of the project as presented. And when they get changed, you know, would, would my vote have changed, would your vote have changed? You know, we're being given a different project in, in the city. And that's, that's where my issue comes back from. We're not, you know, plans are coming in at a very early concept stage. I understand that, I'm in the, I'm in the industry. I understand plans change, but I, I, I'm not experiencing the ability in other cities of, of the kind of change that a 50% change in footprint would constitute. I'm not seeing that as acceptable elsewhere. So, you know, we're already, I mean, like it says, we're already one of the friendliest approval processes around.
We're discussing, Commissioner Alter?
Um, okay. I, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I find myself in the, the Bradrick camp on this. I, I like the, the direction it's going. I do think, I will say 50% struck me as, as high to begin with. I, I, I like the concept and think we should go somewhere in the middle.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A 50% increase in the footprint of a building is very significant increase. That could, well, you have neighbors that like to be involved when building is being put up. And I can see a, a big building being increased by 50% can cause concern among the neighbors. 50% increase in the cube of this building will also increase, or possibly increase traffic, parking, and all those things. And I hear what Commissioner is saying that if the, the city council approves the 10%, and then they hear about 50% increase, that actually would change that surrounding of that building. I think they will not be too happy about that. I agree that 10% is very restrictive. And I, I, I want to say that we lower the 50%. Yes, we are consumer-friendly, and we're gonna be, be help both sides. In our, in my opinion, our staff has a good read as to what the council would approve. They have a good read of that. But staff can change. And then, you know, they, we make a 50% change and without the council knowing about it, I, I, I think is not good. I would go with a compromise of 30%. That would give staff to, to allow to, to permit the, the change. And I don't think it will create as much concern among the neighbors and eventually the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh, Commissioner Broderick.
Stan, I'd like to clarify something in, because I, I do agree with what Commissioner Benke was saying, but can you clarify the difference between, because this states PUD amendments, not PUDs? So, if we were gonna talk about a, a new apartment building going up in the heart of the city, that would be a brand-new planned unit development that would come in front of us.
Yes.
This is simply where there's already a PUD in place, and we have these in front of us almost every meeting where they are making an amendment to an existing PUD. And I, 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 that's where I don't understand Commissioner Benke's comments about if the building was X and it was gonna be, I, I, I understand if it's a brand-new planned unit development, that's gonna, that, this would not be, would not affect that, am I correct?
That's correct.
If it's a brand-new planned unit development for a, a whole new, but this is just amendments to an existing PUD.
Correct.
Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Okay.
Yes.
Correct. And again, the existing PUD was an approved project. And somebody comes in and wants to increase the size by 10%, we don't see it. So when it wants to come in by 50% under the new rule, we wouldn't see it. Quite honestly, it changes the character of the building and the neighborhood. And I do realize staff said that as long as they meet all the other requirements. I think that's a very difficult test with, out, you know, it, typically a PUD is already maxed out. I mean, that's just the way that they're, that's the whole reason for getting a PUD, is you're trying to get pretty much as much into the project as you can. The city's supposed to benefit from it, the applicant benefits from it. Okay, so let's say that we have an approved PUD and then, and they want to come in and amend it. It's gonna kind, you know, let's just say that they're gonna take the PUD from the, from the, a hospital building, and they're gonna make the building 50% taller. There's that much more parking that has to be involved. They have to meet the parking requirement. How do they do that? Well, they're pretty much gonna have to either go underground and put a ramp in, because typically the surface parking is already told with. It, it, it creates a large amount of changes to the character of the original project. And it's, it's those kinds of examples that I think you have to consider in terms of what the, you know, at, at what point is it okay to not bring that back before a public hearing? To not bring it back before the commissions? And I think 50% is too high. I think it's way too high. I think, I think 10%, you know, I think 10% is too high, but it's where it is now.
Did you wanna?
Commissioner Benke made it. I just wanted to clarify that this provision is only for the cube of the building. It doesn't change the green space requirements, doesn't change the parking requirements. All those other elements of the PUD needs to stay in place. And, and, and if something happened where the only way to increase the size of the building is to request a, a parking deviation or a reduction in green space, then it has to come back to you.
Sure. So are we really approving, are we really at being asked to discuss something here that's unlikely to happen because of the geometries and the, and the metrics of the site? I mean, I, I personally can't see a project that could change the building footprint 50% and not have all the other things fall into play.
I think an example would have been what the ultimate recommendation was for Menards would be an example of what could happen without having to come here. It was the expansion of a, of a, an outdoor accessory building. The building material percentage stayed the same. The ultimate recommendation was that the green space stayed the same. I guess maybe in.
They wanted a deviation to green space.
They want, yeah, they wanted a deviation.
So that would.
Yeah, and that would have came back anyways.
Sure. So it's like, so we're changing this for essentially no reason?
I think I'd go back to what Commissioner Broderick said. If you have a, a, a PUD and it's a 10,000 square foot building, adding on 1,000 square feet probably economically doesn't even make any sense.
True.
But adding on 20,000 square, or 2,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet might make sense. And when we're going from 10,000 to 1250, if they can meet the parking and maintain the green space, you know, it's, and when you're talking about that type of business, that's, that's a small business, not a lot of resources. Where you might be right, that, you know, a very large business that already built their site out to the max, they're not gonna be able to do a 10% PUD without having to get some other relief. But I think the small, smaller businesses are the ones that would have the best.
Yeah, and I don't know that you're gonna find that, and again, you might know more than this. I don't think we're gonna find too many small buildings like that in PUDs. I don't, still think, I don't, I don't think those situations exist in Burnsville.
What was the medical clinic that was done over by Home Depot?
That was a dental?
Oh.
Was that, that was more than 10, but I think it was less than 50.
It was, it was, it was very close and they met, I believe, nearly everything.
Oh, and they had it on at the dental building?
Yeah. That's a PUD.
Park Dental, was it?
Mm-hmm, Park Dental.
Oh, Park Dental, I thought you meant the one, I thought you meant the one down, down in the hole, by the pawn shop. The small one down there. Okay.
I think a good question to ask is what, what is prompting the desired change other than just labeling it more business-friendly? Is there, have we, have we seen adversity from applicants when they're at 15% and they're maybe withdrawing an application because they have to go through the process?
I believe the direction is coming from some council members, some planning commission members, to, you know, make sure that our processes, you know, are easier for folks to be able to make improvements and do things with their, their business properties, so.
Ms. Carol?
This is just one.
Didn't we hear from Park Dental that they objected to the cost of going through the amendment process for their addition?
The cost is another. The cost is another factor, yes.
Because when you're adding on the review time and the consultants' escrows and the like, that's for same-building materials meeting the standards.
That's true.
Chair, if I may add, this will be going to city council on January ninth for additional discussion and input. So the next step really is city council for similar vetting process, maybe not as in-depth. But then whatever changes, not only through your recommendation, but their recommendations, would likely move forward through potential ordinance changes or further study.
Okay.
Sure.
Just want to, I kind of want to ask you a question about this, too, is when you say cost, is that something that we can examine as well to lower the overall burden on applicants? Because I think that would be one solution to this, if we looked at that piece. I know that's a pretty big piece. We probably aren't going to get a whole lot of information on tonight. But I just want to throw that out there as maybe that being another solution to this in tandem.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we are, we, cost is part of our jurisdiction to get into. That's the city council's land use.
Yeah, well, the only reason I brought it up is because Mr. Zwerber had mentioned it.
More importantly, too, I know that, again, in the industry, I know when the costs come in, it's pay-for-staff time. So, I mean, if we're reducing the costs, we're reducing what the staff has the time to do, which I don't know that that goes together. And quite honestly, with the examples that I was given, I think that for those specific situations, it, the ten percent probably is too low. But I still think the fifty percent's too high.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I tend to agree. So we don't have to come to a conclusion indefinitely on this tonight? Or should we?
Ms. Dean, you're going to carry forward the, basically, the minutes from this to the city council?
That's correct.
It's a house divided on this one.
Okay. So that is my...
Really, we kind of came together for...
I got one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Your attachment E, the analysis, I guess, I've, I've, in some of these cities on the other side of the deal, and I guess the only one, I guess I would observe here is that where you talk about conditional uses and variances and things with Shakopee, their planning commission operates also as a board of adjustment. So when you come in for a variance there, you're actually seeing the board of adjustment, not the planning commission.
But don't they give a recommendation to the city council?
Yes, yes. So if that's where you were going at with this, then I see the point.
Because Shakopee has, their board of adjustments is the decision you could appeal to the city council, but it's not automatically going to the city council.
Correct. And that, I think, is the distinction here, because under, under variance, you have Shakopee requires planning commission and city council review, and that doesn't always happen in that case. I think most of the other cities around here do have a more conventional setup in that sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Roderick?
Also, in reference to your attachment E, I appreciate that. Permitted uses, we seem to be really, we do a good job. Believe it or not, Commissioner Benke, I did have
the same thing.
The same thing highlighted on conditional uses. For planned unit developments, a couple of the unique things that we are slightly different, and I guess just from the standpoint of it going further through the city council, I don't think we need to review this. But Lakeville, the zoning administrator, whoever that is, has the power to approve the final plan and development agreement after the development stage plan goes through planning commission and city council. I don't know, that's not in, you know, it said the staff are allowed to authorize minor changes. I think there's something to be looked at there. And then the only other difference with variance is Egan doesn't, it doesn't go to the planning commission. And I'm not saying I'm trying to put us out of business, but anytime we can streamline the application process, and if it is truly a variance, then it has to go in front of the elected body. That doesn't have, because typically our role is to vet out issues and make a recommendation one way or the other. I just think those are two unique points that need to be at least pointed out to the council as options where we are not necessarily the same.
Commissioner Broderick, if you go to attachment G, that does point out the two that you did indicate. The variance only has the city council, and then the condition for Lakeville's approval is a footnote there.
I think the only other thing I can say about that, if I might, is that our schedule, where basically council sees the items at the very next meeting, is also different than a lot of the other cities. A lot of the other cities, you may wait two meetings before you go in. So the time involvement for having the extra meeting is minimal. And staff typically handles, all the information is the same from one meeting to the next anyway. But, yeah, I, we used to wait, we used to wait two weeks to a month after planning commission to go to city council.
If I may add, some cities also require two city council meetings, a first reading and a second reading.
Correct. And notifications, the notifications involved with such, yeah.
All right. Mr. Zwerber's question to the commission now is how many of the fifteen?
Well, I'm sorry, we actually did that. We did, we did it one by one.
I had set this up. I was about to recap, but, yeah. I guess the, well, a couple of things that we were left with question marks on was the data and call center split. And then conditional uses for health clubs within the B1 were my notes, unless I'm missing anything else. We had any lingering questions on?
Well, I had heard that the waste management is not priority one to resolve.
Where do we want to prioritize the data call and health clubs? I mean, is that something that's pressing? Or I guess I'm not familiar with the process here. So after we're done discussing this, are we making a recommendation to the city council, or is this purely just a discussion piece?
Chair, our task at hand is discussion and vetting. I do believe we have executed that.
I believe so as well.
From a standpoint of giving the council our thoughts, however divided we may be on a particular topic.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
That was very thorough and productive.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is review of planning ends and outcomes and discussion 2018 planning commission work plan. And Ms. Dean is presenting this item.
Good evening, chair, members of the commission. In your packet, you received a copy of the ends and outcomes. Annually, these are reviewed at the city council work session, all-day work session that typically happens in January. So we're asking, one, the planning commission to take a look at those ends and outcomes. And please comment if you have any suggested changes. Primarily, the planning commission would look at the development redevelopment ends and outcomes section. And most of the city code changes or development projects that you see correlate with those policies and recommendations. But certainly, if there's anything else that, as you look through the document, that you wanted to highlight or changes that you want us to recommend to move forward to council for their consideration, we're certainly open to that. I don't know if there were any general observations as you look through the packet or if you're okay with how they're written today.
Commissioners, any questions or Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to say that I think we have done a very good job with the 2017 work plan. As of tonight, we have completed every item. I mean, item eight and nine goes to the city council, so we can safely say we have completed our task for 2017. However, there were just a few that were left. And I agree with the items that the staff is considering that we put on the list. So I support this draft plan for 2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other questions for Ms. Dean?
So the 2017 work plan that does show our progress that we've accomplished so far as staff and as a commission, a couple of those items were moved from 2017 to 2018. Staff had the opportunity to check in with city council to look at, you know, priority projects, staffing levels, where consultant dollars should be spent. And with those recommendations, we did move some items forward. For example, upkeep of residential neighborhood signs. We also moved forward to 2018 illumination standards for our B zoning districts that are adjacent to residential. We also moved forward review of the fencing standards that we have in place. Should those, should we be more specific in allowable materials? Should we be more flexible? And as you saw tonight, we kicked off the study on the allowable uses for economic competitiveness and the process. And then, of course, we've studied the 2040 comprehensive plan update, made suggested changes, and that will continue to move forward into 2018 with implementation. So we've accomplished a lot in 2017. But again, some of those are carryover items into 2018. So before you, what we've captured is not only those items that carried over from 2017, but also things that we've heard expressed from the commission, expressed from the council as well. Please do keep in mind that not only do we have these items from the 2018 work plan, but we'll also have development applications that will be before you, I can guarantee you that, as well as other items. They're in the queue. And then other items that staff is working on, for example, things that you've not seen on your work plan but will be before you are accessory dwelling units, micro apartment units, the Lower Minnesota Watershed District Plan, and potentially some other changes as they come through. But I invite you to take a look at the list and provide any recommendations, whether it's shifting the quarter that they're reviewed or adding to the list, maybe something that we didn't capture that that's been on your minds.
Any changes from the commission on this? We've accomplished a lot, but I think we've accomplished a lot because of you and Deb's very thorough and hard work. So we sit up here and talk about it, but you guys do all the heavy lifting behind the scenes. So you guys accomplished a lot, while we get to kind of just talk about it for a night, so, and read about it for a couple of days. So thank you for that. That's where I was going with that. If there's no changes or modifications, Commissioner Roderick?
Thank you, Chair. I would also reiterate, yeah, we're just along for the ride. So it's truly what staff has put together. I would suggest, or my comment on a couple of the 2018, I know in 2017, we did spend some money with WSB and we tackled a lot of things. In the name of settling some stuff down, I do think there's a fair amount on your plate with the comp plan and accessory dwellings. And the sign ordinance, the number one sign ordinance and illumination, we've bumped that a couple of years. And once again, I would refer to other commissioners. I know of the specifics that drove this. It was one particular instance, and I can't remember of it going in front of us in other instances. I have spent some time, you know, it's easier now, it gets dark at like, what, noon? And it's a little easier to be out there in the dark. And this particular application, I don't believe to be any different than ninety-five percent of the community from a standpoint of being, and maybe down the road, this could come back up, and this is just my suggestion. I believe there's a lot of other bigger fish to fry than that particular one. And then number two, Chair, I would, I would ask you a little bit more about the sign ordinance. I understand that, but I don't know what our true legal rights are as a city and how we would maintain residential monument signs and what we could or could not do. I know that was originally one of your requests. But, so I would just challenge whether one and two need to be on the list, and could we lighten the load in 2018?
One, you mean two, two and two?
Number one and number two in the 2018 plan.
Mr. Chair, number one, I see a note here says this item was raised by neighbors during McAndrew's Commons Frontier Court. You know, when you were discussing that.
I was a little...
Yeah, that was my point. It was just, it's been in front of just one, one single application. We haven't had that.
We discussed it somewhat with Holiday and its blue lights and the lights around the building, too. I mean, it wasn't specific to a project as much as it was discussed with Chris and the LED illumination. But I agree, it's, have we had, just, have we had any more complaints from Frontier Court?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
Because it...
I don't disagree with number one. I mean, it seems like a somewhat isolated incident or scenario.
For the viewing public, the commission's referring to item number one in their packets and their background report. On the screen or on the chart that was presented, they're referring to the third, the third row.
For the illumination standards for B zones adjacent to residential.
Sorry. Going off of my background.
I was looking at this and then hearing that. And then for, one, two, three, four. So number four on the chart, upkeep of private residential monument signs. I don't, I don't know. I would have to consult to staff what purview the city has on those. The reasoning for even bringing it up was more from a curb appeal for the city of Burnsville. I've just seen some of those entry monument signs that look like they're hurting. And I don't know how far the city can touch those, if they're on public property or private property. Maybe through the discovery process, we figure that out. I just looked at that as a benefit for, like I said, drive-by curb appeal for the city of Burnsville as an economic development tool if we're entertaining new residents. So that was, that was the justification for that. I'm not married to it. If there's bigger things than that out there that we're not maybe seeing on this list, I'm certainly not, it's not, I'm not passionate about it, but...
Chair, I think we can drop it from the list, and staff can investigate it and just give us a report. There's something, we want to know who is responsible for the upkeep of the sites, period.
And if it ends up being us, is it something that we could discuss about?
Sure, you can always add it to an agenda.
Yeah. Again, I'm not, it's not urgent or pressing. It was for the great of the whole. Okay. Well, so I guess if we're going to make any modifications, I'm okay with dropping that piece with the residential entry monument signs. Where do we want to discuss for the illumination standards? We want to drop that as well from the 2018 work plan. Any discussion on that?
I would suggest currently we do drop it. And revisit it if there's another complaint.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that. Anything left?
We need to add, we're going to fill some stuff in then.
These items will be presented to city council, so it is possible that they may come up with a couple of items for further study by the planning commission, or they may say, let's take off a couple more items as well.
Or they say leave those on.
Yeah, very true. So this isn't required recommendation, this is just another discussion piece. So I guess where we're landing is striking out number three and number four. Will this council still see those as being stricken from the work plan?
We can certainly keep it on. And since it has been carryover from year after year, I think it's important to show that history and the decision behind the request from the commission. So, yeah, we'll, we'll keep it on, notate it that with a strike through.
Maybe say if the council sees the need to address it, then, you know, obviously, the planning commission would oblige, but certainly not coming at them as a hard sell on either of those two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I know it doesn't require any recommendation to the city council, so I just want city council to know that the planning commission unanimously support the work plan for 2018.
Yep.
Very much so.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, chair, members of the commission.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is updates.
That is our next meeting.
I think we're going to find out here pretty quick.
January.
2018?
Yes.
Yes, the December 25th meeting is canceled.
I had it on my calendar. I already told my in-laws I wasn't going to be.
In view of the fact that this is our last meeting of the year. As a chair, in view of the fact that this is our last meeting of the year, I would like to, um, uh, wish, uh, commissioners and staff and the residents of our great city of Burnsville, happy holidays, whatever holiday they celebrate, that they let it be safe and happy, and all the best for the new year 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Um, any other updates from the commission or staff?
None from staff.
The, our next planning commission meeting is actually the eighth, January eighth? Okay.
I actually do have a draft.
I have a quick question. Um, have all the, um, other commissions reviewed the start times and is that something that's going to come back to us next year? Obviously it would be because it's our last meeting, but...
I believe, um, I know that the Economic Development, uh, Commission is okay with starting earlier. Uh, I don't know that the Parks and Natural Resource Commission has discussed this yet. Uh, as soon as we hear back from them, we will place that back on the agenda and keep that, um, keep that up there for further discussion for the planning commission.
Okay. If there's no other updates, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Walther, second by Reddick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you for joining us tonight and I hope you have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.